Alderman Metz.
Thank you and good afternoon to each and every one of you. Just the opposite of my colleagues, I'm supporting charter schools. I came to support Noble ITW, By The Hand Club, and I believe I have a concept somewhere coming in. Let me tell you, as the Alderman of the ward for 13 years, I understand what my community go through with. I don't know what nobody else's community go, but I know what my community needs. I didn't only just know this for myself, I asked the community, "What do you want?" Three separate meetings. One was held at Prosser, where I've been on the local school council, working my tail off for the last two or three years, and they promote peace at Prosser. Now, peace can't be promoted at Noble. We want to be inclusive, unity in the community. We don't want to talk about unsafety, we want to prevent anything from happening. We don't want to put the bad out, we want to look at the good, and this is a good thing for our neighborhood. A good thing where kids can go and I could tell parents when they move into that ward, "Yes, we have a good school," instead of saying, "No, they got to go outside the neighborhood." That's what I say. And I'm not reading from no strip. I'm telling you what's in my heart and what I know. I know what I know, and that's all I can tell you, is I know that we need the charter schools there. We need our kids to get a good education. Where were you when they couldn't read and write? And they was graduating and who was there to rescue them? Well, we need to, the kids need to be met on the level that they are at, whether that be Chicago Public Schools, which I support very wholeheartedly. I have two kids graduated from there, but at the same time, I'm looking at this generation today, who's going to meet them on their level? Where they have all the problems in the home, and the teacher take one child, be out of order. So if they need something different, let them have their choice. Let the family have their choice to send their child wherever they want to send them. And we should just be a leader and a servant and provide those opportunities for them, whether it be public schools, whether it be a charter school, whether it's a contract school, these schools just didn't start today. And I want to say, thank you very much for listening to me, and I tell you again, I didn't come with a written script. I came to tell you the truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Brookins.
Good afternoon. Alderman Howard Brookins of the 21st Ward, Mr. President and members of the board. I appreciate you taking the time to hear from us, and I want to say ditto with my colleague, Emma Metz said. Eight years ago, our colleagues purported to speak for us, to say what our communities need. Many of members who had never even been to the 21st Ward stood in the way of the development and held that development up for more than eight years because they thought they knew what was best for my ward, despite the fact that I had been elected to that ward. Opposition spent $500,000 to run me out of office based on my decision to move forward with the development in which this project, the Legacy Project, sits at the foot of. This is a 250,000-square-foot development at Chatham, at the South Sheen Carson La Real building, that has sat vacant for more than 10 years. We have had four community meetings in the 21st Ward, the 6th Ward, the 9th Ward, and the 17th Ward, and overwhelmingly, the response has been positive in respect to the Legacy Project with Pastor Jenkins and also Concept Charter Schools. I can't tell Alderman Spazado or Alderman Wagispec what's going on in their area, and I ask that they not dictate to this board what is best for my residents. I will put myself for election, and people will judge whether I was right or wrong. When they did that eight years ago, many of the retail merchants that had committed to come to the Chatham Ridge Mall suddenly pulled out as the economic situation declined. We need this development in our ward. The citizens want the development in the ward. Not only is this just a charter school, but it is retail, it is restaurant, it is auditorium, and it's a community center, and I just ask if I may at this point yield just a few seconds to Pastor Jenkins.
Mr. President, if I may note, Reverend Jenkins is not a registered speaker.
I understand, but we've been allowing people... Pastor Jenkins, if you could keep it brief, please. I want to, this is out of deference to the Alderman.
So, so in context with brevity, thank you, Mr. President and the board, with brevity, I succeeded Reverend Clay Evans about almost 14 years ago at 24th. The church grew exponentially as we looked at how we would expand in a meaningful way in neighborhoods where the streets are stained with blood. I've done those funerals, I've been with those mothers that take life support off of those children. Areas where sickness runs rampant and it's a healthcare desert. Unemployment is out of control. Quality education is at a deficit. 50% of the fathers are missing. 82% of the children are born to single-parent homes. We looked at how to expand in a broader, more dynamic, meaningful way. That's where we arrived at the Legacy Project: jobs, quality education, healthcare, and a commitment to public safety. Well, as we looked at, 80% of the CPS students that come to the City Colleges of Chicago need remediation. Basic math, science, and English, 80% of the graduates that come need remediation. Our team with pure heart and pure motive said, "We've got to have a school or an academic commitment as a part of the Legacy Project." As a number of schools started reaching out to us, wanting to be a partner, a part of our commitment to touching and reaching the community, Concept Schools came to us. We vetted them, we had numbers of conversations with members of CPS's officials and leadership, and at the end of the day, as they came to us as a Level 1 school, as we heard earlier and understood...
Reverend Jenkins, excuse me, can you please conclude?
I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
As a Level 1 school and with private funding capacity, we wanted to welcome them because the community, as we've had several community meetings, several meetings with business, civic, elected officials all across the board, everyone has said repeatedly, "Yeah, we're upset about the school closings. Yeah, we want to see our schools empowered, our neighborhood schools, but a STEM school that focuses on math, science, technology, and engineering, where all of the jobs are going now?" When we say that, it's an overwhelming "Yeah." Let's get that in, and that's why we ask for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Mr. President, we also want to say thank you, and since it's been the system here, Mr. Bellamy is number 24, and he has to leave on the list. We'd ask that he be permitted.
Could you be brief, please, Mr. Bellamy?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. President, and I will be brief, but I just, I think it's only fair that I should say this, just to, the tone has been been set with our pros and cons regarding charter school, concept schools, and the whole nine yards. And this kind of reminds me, and I don't, I'm not being facetious about this, you know, this is not about the North and the South or the East against the West. These meetings, the things that we're saying today is regarding the bedrock of education for all of our students across the city. So I just need to say that before I just read my prepared text. I'm addressing this letter to the board regarding the matter of the proposed Concept Charter School in the Chatham area. I do so not only as a community member in the Chatham area, but as a retired teacher and school administrator. I believe that students, when given the proper tools and exposed to a comprehensive learning environment, will excel. I believe that public and charter schools can coexist together. Options to knowledge must prevail in a system that has so much to offer. Superb educational facilities, whether public or charter, is the most straightforward way to achieve equal learning opportunities for all students. The overall mission of Chicago Public Schools is to provide quality educational services, facilities, and resources in a collaborative effort to enhance partnership with parents, the community, and the student population. The outcome of these goals should positively impact student achievement and a safe, nurturing school environment. The focus of achievement should not only be on the general student population, but the diverse learning, diverse learner as well. Let us not turn our backs on students who have or may potentially fall through the cracks due to a lack of teaching modalities that do not meet the needs of today's student.
Mr. Bellamy, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Besides the core requirements offered by schools, many school corrections lack a comprehensive program that addresses the needs of a diverse student population. Leadership today depends on how well we educate our students, especially in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and math. By not allowing students, or at least affording them an opportunity to be exposed to the 21st century skills is indeed contrary to the mission of our school system. Do I have another 15 seconds? No? Okay, thank you, sir. I do appreciate your indulgence with me, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Special Services Commissioner Jose Garcia. Is he here?
No, excuse me.
You're on my list.
Oh, I thought the elected officials were going first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just reading from the, you can go ahead, Commissioner. We'll take him after you, I'm sorry.
One Garcia to another, the gentleman you, I suppose. Good afternoon, President Vitale, members of the board. I am Jesus Garcia. We're going to switch gears momentarily because today is a very important day as you are about to take an important policy decision for Chicago Public Schools, and I also want to acknowledge the school leadership. As a longtime adherent of the Healthy Schools Campaign, I've been supporting the initiatives and changes around health and wellness for many years. Shortly, you will consider a new full-time physical education policy that is a major shift which will positively affect our children. This is most timely. The statistics around health are staggering, some would say disturbing and a cause for alarm. In this country, it is estimated that 77% of children eat fewer than five servings of fruit and vegetables per day, which is recommended by the Center for Disease Control. We live in a state where 35% of children are considered obese, and the news isn't any better for Chicago, where 40% overweight are obese. Sadly, in districts like mine on the greater southwest side, our obesity rates are twice as high. Studies have demonstrated that children who are currently obese are more likely to stay obese by the time they are adults. By creating the new Office of Student Health and Wellness and by radically changing the physical education policy, we're taking a big step in the right direction and giving our children hope to avoid type 2 diabetes and the many other ailments and obesities that obesity brings with it. The new policy will bring daily physical education to all elementary school-aged children and will establish a standard to ensure that all students are physically literate. It will be an inclusive of all language learners and fitness levels. Indeed, we all know that students perform better with physical activity in their lives. During my tenure as county commissioner, one of my focuses has been health. That's why I created the Health Task Force, which brings together over 50 individuals and organizations that advise me on health matters at the county health system. I strongly support this change and urge you to vote affirmatively on the matter of physical education in Chicago Public Schools. Our children deserve it. And finally, Mr. President and board members, on a separate note, I want to voice my opinion and mine alone with respect to the purported, the proposed charter school proposal before you. I urge you to carefully reconsider your policy of rapid proliferation of these schools. Neighborhood schools are hurting as a result of the already inadequate funding, and this would further drain their resources. Please listen to the concerns. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I think we have President Vitale, a speaker from the Healthy Schools Coalition.
Are they on the list?
Speaker number 40 is Mario Cortez, and Speaker number 58 is Rosa Ramirez Richter.
Good afternoon, I'll be brief. My name is Rosa Ramirez with Healthy Schools Campaign, and on behalf of our organization and 30-plus organizations, we just want to say how ecstatic we are for the proposed PE policy in front of you. We know that by adopting this comprehensive PE policy, it's paving the road for implementation of daily PE over the next three years, and we know with better access to high-quality PE classes, our students will be more focused and ready to learn and will be able to thrive in our city and in the world. In particular, we want to commend the leadership from CPS and publicly acknowledge Dr. Stephanie White for all her hard work, and in particular, the amazing work the Office of Student Health and Wellness has done to make physical education a priority once again and to comply with the state mandate. Thank you so much, and I'm going to pass it off to Mario Cortez.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Mario Cortez. I'm in the local school council at Youngman Elementary and serve in the school wellness team. I am also a member of Parents United for Healthy Schools Training Committee, and I'm working for the last eight years as a volunteer coach at Benito Juarez Community Academy, where we stress physical activity for better academic achievement for freshmen and sophomores and senior students. As you know, Parents United for Healthy Schools collected and submitted over 7,000 petitions in support of daily PE at the November Board Meeting, you remember that. We are pleased that today's board meeting, you are considering adopting a new physical education policy that will include high-quality physical education instruction for all students. We applaud CPS for not seeking a renewal of the waiver that authorizes the school board to excuse students for engaging in a daily physical education course. And the policy clearly establishes, the new policy establishes the requirement to provide all CPS students with access to daily PE and outlines key elements to strengthen PE, such as implementing a standard-based curriculum that emphasizes moderate to vigorous physical activity. As parents, we appreciate this policy, and we are convinced that our children will improve their academic achievement and will adapt lifelong skills to become healthier individuals, impacting future student generations. As parents, we will continue to advocate for healthier changes in our schools and commit our efforts to ensure that daily PE takes to sales force. This group is only a part of that 7,000 petitions, so we are supporting the students that they couldn't sign in the petition, but we are on behalf of them, we are supporting the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez.
Excuse me, did you sign up on the list?
Yes, Jose Garcia, a special service area commissioner for 59th Street. And what happens, I always get confused with Jesus Garcia, who is the elected official for Cook County. So when I say my name's Jose Garcia, they always confuse me with Jesus Garcia. So I'm also a commissioner for Special Service Area 59.
Members of the board, public officials, teachers, activists, and parents. My name's Jose Alejandro Garcia, a parent of six children, five grandchildren in the Gates Park neighborhood. I used to be a previous president at Gates Park High School for years, Morel Elementary School for six years, president. I am a commissioner volunteer now in the Special Service Area 59 District. It consists from 59th Street Western and runs to 59th and Kedzie. I, with other members, vote to oversee where the money goes in this district. I also want to let you know that it is a non-paying position. Also wanted to let the board members know, I appreciate Mr. Alfred Rogers, a community activist, mentor, and my friend. I am not saying that all public schools are failing. I have a child at Morel Elementary School in math and science, and it's trying to, and the school is trying to meet his standards of passing. This is an opportunity to allow quality options to open in the low-income neighborhood. We are allowing parents their rights, whether they vote on election or not, this opportunity. Does anyone know or play the Illinois Lottery? I have a bundle of used tickets here, none of these tickets were winning tickets. Everyone wants to have the winning ticket, but we never win. When the city took away the overpass that went from 39th and Damon to 47th and Damon, it caused a prosperous area. This affected Gates Park neighborhood, Back of the Yards neighborhood, Inglewood neighborhood, and Chicago Long neighborhood to fail. It created a lack of resources and now is a high area for dropouts and crime. I'm going to be ending. The parents that I spoke to...
Mr. Garcia, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
The parents that I spoke to are crying out for better education. This is an opportunity for this to happen. The kids cannot wait anymore, the jails are, the jails are filling up with our kids. Enough is enough. So I say to you, your decision is important. Concept Schools have a track record of success and data to back it up. These neighborhoods need it, so please vote yes to approve. Thank you so much, God bless you.
Thank you.
Karen, your turn.
Good to have you.
Well, I have good news and bad news, so I'm going to start with the bad news, and I'm going to end on the good news, because I think that's so much better.
Thank you.
Freedom to choose is at the bedrock of our society, but choice has to be made with facts, if you will, because if they aren't, they're false choices. Knowledge is the basis for real choice, but the predetermined path is, will lead you down to false choices. So, for example, in neighborhood schools, parents have voice, they're called local school councils, and they're extremely important, but that voice is removed when parents choose, and I'm saying choose, to go to charters. And why is that? Because charters actually take away parent voice. Because parents don't really choose charters, charters choose children. And that's the difference, because if you cannot be a part of their process on the accountability piece, if you're not at the test level, they'll ask you to leave. And we've seen this over and over and over again. But what I'm most concerned at this point is that 47% of the charters are underutilized, even by your own standards, that you chose to close last year 49 schools. That's 1,100 underutilized seats. Parents chose last year to keep their neighborhood schools, but they were denied that choice. So when we talk about choice, and this is the beauty of Chicago, we've had choice for over 40 years. When I was in high school, you could choose to go to other high schools. We've had choice, we understand what it is. But what parents really want are well-resourced and highly-trained educators, and they're not allowed that choice. In state-by-state, we've been shown the seamy underbelly of the charter movement, the insider deals, the lack of transparency, and the lack of accountability, which means more than test scores, I want to make sure we're clear on that, that's a double standard. And that behavior that would get an administrator fired in CPS will actually get you a bonus at charter schools via the largess of the taxpayer. So I'd like to help you with that. I will be very happy to work with you to overturn the law that created the Illinois Charter School authorizing authority. This is an area where we can work together, because I, as I heard from Dr. Hines, the notion that these schools can be, after you all have done your hard work and your due diligence and saying no, you can be overridden by an agency that is absolutely accountable to no one. I will be very happy, this is an area where you and I can walk hand in hand to Springfield, I know that never happens, but this could actually be a watershed moment. David, I will sit on that table with you, begging and screaming to get rid of that law. I bet you if we worked on that together, that Springfield would respond.
Let's join hands.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll continue with the public participation. The next speaker will be Speaker number one, please, Catherine Myers, followed by Speaker 25, Stephen Kraus, and then Speaker 53, please, Sharina May. Catherine Myers, please.
Hi, good afternoon. We had a few more folks here that unfortunately had to head back to work this morning, including our third speaker, so it'll just be myself, Mr. Kraus. My name is Catherine Myers. I'm the lead founder of Great Lakes Academy Charter School, you've seen me here before, and we thank the Office of New Schools for their approval recommendation after a very thorough and rigorous process with them. I want to reiterate to you today the grassroots, passionate community support that we have from members of the Greater South Shore community. I received an email last night from Mr. Truitt, a community resident and member of our community outreach committee, which we've already been meeting for six months, doing outreach in our area. We've been there over a year. Catherine, I have a meeting tomorrow with my contractor bosses, so unfortunately I won't be able to make it. I hope you and the group know that I'm with you, and I am praying that everyone's hard and smart work pays off. I am rock for the belief that what Great Lakes Academy is trying to do is right, good, and will give some deserving children a chance for a brighter future and a better life that would not otherwise be available to them. Signed, Mr. Truitt. He's been working hard with us for a year, and again, I said, was one of the founding members of our community outreach committee. We've heard from thousands of residents in Greater South Shore that want a high-quality college preparatory elementary school in their community, serving their children now. They want a school that will begin to prepare their children now to compete for seats in top high school sites throughout the city, admission into top colleges nationally. They know that college preparation begins in kindergarten, and we agree. In Greater South Shore, between 1/3 and 49% of students are leaving the area for their education.
Ms. Myers, Ms. Myers, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure.
Thank you.
Great Lakes Academy wants to be part of the solution, providing a high-quality education to students of South Shore, in South Shore, and we ask you for your vote for our approval today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Good afternoon, I'm Steve Kraus. I'm the board chair for the Great Lakes Academy Charter School. We, the board, would like to thank you and the Office of New Schools for the rigorous process that you put us through and all of the other charter applicants through. We feel that our application was of high quality, and we think that our school... And that view was expressed yesterday in the Chicago Tribune editorial dealing with the expansion of charter schools. It's the right school. It's focused on rigorous college preparatory academics to prepare our students for eventual success in elementary school, in high school, in college, and in life. It's in the right place. Not only the Tribune's editorial board, but the Illinois Facilities Fund has identified the South Shore community as an area of great need. And it's the right time. As Catherine said, we have been in the South Shore community for over a year before the concept of priority schools was created as part of the application process. We've talked with over 1,500 parents, guardians, and community members. We believe we have their support. South Shore community members, South Shore parents, are looking forward to our school opening in this coming year. South Shore is their priority community, it's ours as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker then is Speaker 53, please, Sharina May, followed by Speaker number two, Carrie Murphy.
The Sharina is who had to leave, she had some business to attend to, unfortunately. We were number one on the list, but a little later.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last call for Carrie Murphy, please, Speaker number two.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Murphy. I served on the Northwest Side NAC. I served on the Northwest Side NAC. I also serve on the LSE at Dever Elementary, an overcrowded Level One school with fantastic staff and fantastic teachers. I voted no to both the Noble and Intrinsic proposals because they do not meet the needs of the students in the community and there is little to no community support for them. At the NAC Charter School Community Hearing, over 150 people attended. Only three people spoke in support of the schools. Alderman Mitz wasn't there, by the way. She was invited, though. I also based my vote on research. I urged the vote, or the board, to vote no to both their proposals for the same reasons. I would like to read to you a portion of a report that was published in 2011 by the Shanker Institute. I'm sure Barbara Bird Bennett is aware of the study as she sits on the board of the Shanker Institute. And I quote, "The vast majority of charter schools get no better and no worse test-based results than comparable regular public schools. The available evidence very tentatively indicates that the few consistently effective chains tend to employ policies, most notably large amounts of additional time tutoring and high-stakes discipline policies that are both cost-intensive and likely to yield diminishing returns with expansion in a given location." Noble and Intrinsic are prime examples of what this report is referring to. The Noble network of schools has not shown any kind of stunning results compared to CPS schools and Intrinsic has only been in operation for four months. The larger they get, the more room there is for failure and lack of oversight. I'm sure you're familiar with UNO. Couple that with the fact that there are no non-selective high schools within a five-mile radius of the Noble location. And it doesn't make any sense. Neither of these proposals do unless you're looking at making money.
Ms. Murphy, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure. Finally, I would like to inform you that the NAC process was flawed and there needs to be an investigation into the entire NAC process that occurred on the Northwest Side. I also noticed that the recommendations presented by Jack Elsley early in the meeting did not include any of the recommendations from the NAC when it came to either the Noble ITDW campus or Intrinsic. We submitted multiple conditions which apparently have no merit. In addition, we were told by Emily from the Office of New Schools that Intrinsic could not be replicated due to their lack of experience and no historical data. How do you recommend a school for approval to relieve overcrowding when they don't even know where they'll be?
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker, please, will be Speaker number three, please, Angelica Alfaro, followed by Speaker number five, Lucy Reese, and then Speaker number 11, please, Esmeralda Mora.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Angelica Alfaro and I am a proud graduate of Noble's First Class from 2003. And I will be sharing a letter of support from one of our alums who cannot be here today, and you'll see why as I read his letter. My name is Jairo Livares and although I'm studying 1,000 miles away, my heart still lives at home on Latrobe, a block away from the Burrito Amigo. That's why I'm writing to you today. I want to advocate for the opening of a new Noble campus. I'm more than sure that the benefits of Noble's ITW Spear Academy will reach far beyond its walls. I am a graduate of Pritzker College Prep, a Noble campus, partially by choice and partially because it was my only other option. The selective enrollment schools had chosen not to accept me, so my family and I figured Noble would be a good alternative. My parents were apprehensive about the neighborhood I'd be traveling to every day. It wasn't the best neighborhood in Chicago, but I never once felt threatened while at school, not once. Noble does an excellent job building an environment of study and community. Having high expectations for us creates a culture where you're not worried about getting beat up in the hallway or shoved into a locker. What worries you is whether or not your khakis are well-ironed, how you did on that last test, and how hard you're going to hit practice after school. Those are the kind of worries that a student should have. Noble builds character, discipline, and success. Their biggest strength is their commitment to college. I began my high school career expecting to be a waiter, factory worker, or mechanic, not because I thought I wasn't capable of more, but because that's honestly what I wanted in life, a simple life with the family, a home, and a job that made enough money just to put food on the table. College was never a real part of my plan.
Ms. Alfaro, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure.
Thank you.
Seeing everyone around me, students and teachers alike, present work inspired me to do even more. I had to put things first. Senior year came and went, and the summer I was Harvard-bound. I will be forever grateful for all the opportunities that were given to me. If Noble taught me anything, I know that the sky is the limit. Best regards, Jairo Livares, 2017, Harvard University Belmont Corrigan Resident. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Lucy Reese, followed by Speaker 11, Esmeralda Mora, and then Speaker number 12, Rhonda Colchliffle, followed by Speaker 22, Marilyn Burns, please.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Lucy Reese and I'm a proud parent leader for Charter Parents United. I'm glowing in yellow, bring some sunshine to you guys this afternoon. This is a very personal day for me and my family. Nine years ago, when I was looking for a public high school for my eldest son, there were no quality options within my neighborhood on the south side of the city, nothing. So I wanted a safe environment for my child where I knew that he would be respected, get support, and also be well-protected within the community of the school that he would be attending. And I found that in North Lyndale College Prep, a charter school, however, it was on the west side, but it met my conditions of what I needed for a school. If that meant traveling an hour, we did so. Now I have another son who just recently is attending his second year at a Noble school, which is slightly closer to the home. However, I do have a selective school that's closer to my home that he was not able to attend. However, I had a choice, and that choice was Gary Comer College Prep. He's doing exceedingly well right now and I'm proud to say that charters exist for a reason. They're here to give me a choice while I don't have within my neighborhood. I'm like what Alderman Brooken said, there are so many things in our communities where it's not safe for our children, and I need a safe environment. I don't need my child to go through a school where he has to go through a metal detector. He goes with his books in his hands, he goes with a knowledge of learning, and that's where I feel all children should go, have a knowledge of learning. And I'm looking for you guys to make the best possible choices on the quality education of charter schools that you have put forth in front of you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Esmeralda Mora and I grew up in the Humboldt Park neighborhood. As a child, I never thought of going or attending a college. I didn't know anyone in my entire family or neighborhood that had attended college and even graduating from high school was a huge accomplishment. When it came time to enroll to a school after eighth grade, I wanted to make sure that I knew all of my options. Most of my family members had attended our local high schools and would come home and tell me stories about all the fights they've experienced. I was not sure if the stories were true or just blown out of proportion, but I wanted to outweigh my options and figure it out by myself. I visited my local schools, but also took a long bus ride to a school that was not so close to my home, but promised to give me a great education. That school was Noble Street College Prep. Noble had a longer school day, a longer school year, a strict discipline code, uniforms, and a lot of homework that I wasn't used to, but I still decided to enroll. However, I did think about it twice once I was there. I struggled during my first year, but my teachers offered a lot of support and really wanted me to succeed. By sophomore year, I was in the honor roll in attending a summer program at Dominican University. The idea of college began to form. During my junior year, I was able to study on an actual college campus at the University of Arizona. After that, I knew I was going to college. My teachers at Noble allowed my dream to become a reality, and today I am doing the same as a proud first-generation college graduate and as a teacher in my community. I see myself in my students and I can't wait to see them come back after college to serve their community, too.
Ms. Mora, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Will do.
Thank you.
We are that change that everyone wants to see. Just continue to give us a chance by giving families a choice. I would like to conclude by asking for your support of the proposed Noble campuses before you today. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Rhonda Colchliffle. I'm the Chief External Affairs Officer with Noble. For close to 15 years, Noble has operated Chicago Public High Schools across our city. Most have some of the highest graduation, college acceptance, and college persistence scores in Chicago. We're honored that so many families have chosen a Noble education and we want to serve thousands of others that are looking to have one. Before you, you have two very unique proposals. The first is a proposed ITW David Spear Academy to be located in a priority community. We're all fortunate that we are able to invest private funds to build a new STEM high school. It'll have five engineering labs and four science labs to support the curriculum. We look forward to offering this exceptional opportunity to the community and helping to launch thousands of students on a path to becoming engineers, scientists, doctors, and teachers. We're grateful to the Neighborhood Action Council who voted to support this campus and to the many families, ministers, businesses, and of course Alderman Mitz for her passionate support. Alderman Mitz has asked that we establish an attendance boundary. We think that's important. There's been folks here from Prosser Career Academy, but as you know, they are not an open enrollment public high school. If we're to ease overcrowding, we fully support her request for an attendance boundary at this campus. The second proposed campus is a result of a collaboration with Noble and the Phillips Exeter Academy in New Hampshire. Exeter is known for pioneering the Harkness method, which Jack described to you earlier. The Harkness method has a proven track record of strengthening critical thinking, discussion skills, and academic understanding, fully preparing students for collegiate and professional success.
Ms. Colchliffle, excuse me, can you please conclude?
I can. This will be the first collaboration of its kind in the country. It's a unique opportunity that I encourage you to please approve. We propose to incubate at 17 North State and work with the district to find an appropriate permanent site. Thank you for the work you do. You're making hard decisions, but please know that you're making decisions that improve education for the children of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker then is last call for Marilyn Burns, Speaker 22. Moving on to Speaker number 14, please, Juanita Ariola, followed by Speaker number 29, Katie Osgood, and Speaker 36, please, Raquel Macias. Last call for Juanita Ariola. Next speaker, please, Speaker number 29, Katie Osgood.
Good afternoon, Board of Education and President Vitale. My name is Juanita Ariola.
Could you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
Okay. My name is Juanita Ariola and I stand before you as a proud parent of two Noble students, one recent graduate. I really wish I had two minutes for each child so I could explain the impact of a Noble education and what it has done for my entire family. I would not have a story to share if I did not have a Noble education, I'm sorry, if I did not have a choice on where to send my children in the first place. They attend Musion, the second non-selective college prep in the city of Chicago, here in the Loop. They travel all the way from Pilsen because I did not have high-quality choices in my community. I chose Noble because it is top-performing, non-selective, and it provides a safe environment for my children, also because it is not only, not only are their teachers and staff held accountable, but so are my children. Noble is an extended family outside of my home. My children have advisors and advisees who stick together for the entire four years. They focus on each other, I'm, sorry, they focus on each of the students and they are there to ensure that each student is setting goals for themselves. As a parent, there is no other way to describe it other than amazing. They have set expectations for my children just like me. My oldest of the three is currently a freshman at Calvin College, a four-year liberal arts college in Michigan. She actually goes back to school tomorrow. My other daughter, currently a senior, has consistently expressed how she loves the way Noble focuses on academic growth rather than specific test scores. And she says, "Mom, it doesn't matter where you are academically because each student is attended for and at the end, the results speak for themselves." She entered her freshman year-
Ms. Ariola, Ms. Ariola, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes. She entered her freshman year scoring a 15 on her Pre-Explore and scored a 24 on her ACT. She grew nine points. My son currently is a freshman and has begun a Noble career. It's on the same path and the path to success. I share my story today. I want other parents to have options like I did, so please support Noble in their opening of their new campuses. Thank you.
Thank you.